Welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor A.C. Phipps from the Evanswood Church of God with us this evening to give the invocation. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after. Good evening Pastor.
Hi. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this gift of a new year. And God, we pray tonight that you would bless and that you would give this council wisdom throughout this new year. We pray this and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And we have a special guest that is going to be here this evening and he is in the room, but I'm going to try and delay this for just a couple of minutes if I could. I guess I could make a couple of comments about the recognition before our guest gets here. I was in City Manager Kishnik's office before the holidays and he pointed out the Governing Magazine to me that was in his office that council and staff gets once a month. And we noted that the county exec, L. Brooks Patterson, was being honored by the Governing Magazine. And we thought it was appropriate for us to recognize him for being recognized by the Governing Magazine. And it's a great honor, I know, for him. And it's a great honor for us to be able to present a proclamation to the county executive who has done so much for this community and done so much for this county. So it's an honor and a privilege for me as mayor to present a proclamation to the county executive, L. Brooks Patterson. And I'm going to go down to the podium if I could and wait for his arrival. He is in the building and making his way towards the podium. See State Representative Howard Lex here this evening. Good evening. Please come forward. I'm going to try and do this from here if that's okay with you. It's great to see you here.
Thanks to be out and about and up and around.
I was just telling the audience before you got here that City Manager Kishnik kind of brought it to my attention that of the honor that was given to you by the Governing Magazine and we thought it was so appropriate to present to you a proclamation from the city of Troy recognizing that and everything that you've done for this city and this county. Thank you for that.
My pleasure.
And if I could, I'd like to ask Mr. Kishnik to come down here because he did initiate this and I seconded it and I certainly would like him to be down here. And Brooks, this is also signed by all of the council members that are here this evening. If I could, I'd like to have them come down also. And I don't know that you've met all of our councils.
There are many.
Councilwoman Hoderek was elected in November and you may or you may not have met her, but I'd like to introduce you to her. Ed Pennington, of course, you know, Jim Campbell, Wade Fleming, Mayor Pro Tem Henderson, and you know Doug.
I do.
So we're going to surround here.
Okay.
And if it's okay, I'd like to read this to you if that's okay with you. This is a proclamation to recognize in recognition of County Executive L. Brooks Patterson. Whereas Governing Magazine named L. Brooks Patterson as one of Public Officials of the Year for two thousand and thirteen. And whereas Governing Magazine wrote that government at its best is about creating opportunities for all. Strong leadership means providing every citizen, everyone in every community with a chance to grow, prosper, and thrive. And whereas L. Brooks Patterson definitely knows the value of using government to help citizens, he is transforming Oakland County and southeast Michigan with his vision and no-nonsense leadership, which I certainly appreciate. His mission is to make Oakland County one of the best places to live, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas in his sixth year, sixth four-year term as Chief Executive Officer of one of America's most affluent and progressive counties, Brooks presides over a seven hundred and seventy-six million dollar. Did it go up? What did it go up to?
Eighty.
We have a typo.
No, no. Since this was declared, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Eight hundred and ten million dollar budget for FY two thirteen, two thousand and thirteen, and a county workforce of nearly four thousand full and part-time benefit eligible employees. Now, has that gone up?
Down.
Gone.
Thirty-three hundred.
So that's gone down to thirty-three hundred. Whereas during the twenty years of Brooks' administration, Moody's Investors Service and Standards and Pores have awarded Oakland County its coveted triple-A bond rating for its prudent fiscal policies and success in transforming Oakland County's economy from a manufacturing to a knowledge-based economy, which is incredible. And whereas Brooks has launched a number of innovative programs, including a three-year budget, which I'm happy to say our city has mirrored four years ago from your leadership. We thought that was a great thing to do and it saved our city, believe me.
That gives you the outlook you need.
Emerging sectors, Medical Main Street, Automation Alley, Oakland County International Airport, Green Terminal, the Brooks Seaway, which I know is near and dear to you, cloud commuting, arts beats and eats, and healthcare cost containment initiative. He recently launched a new website to match people looking for job skills training with trade schools in the region. And now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council extends special recognition to Oakland County Executive L. Brooks Patterson as one of Governing Magazine's Public Officials of the Year for two thousand and thirteen. And thanks him for his leadership in job growth, especially in technology sector, and setting a positive example to the Oakland County communities by implementing a rolling three-year budget plan. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all the Troy residents congratulate Oakland County Executive L. Brooks Patterson for being such a tireless leader for Oakland County and wish him continued success in all future endeavors. And it's signed and presented this thirteenth day of January two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. I'd like to respond if I might, Mayor. First of all, thank you very much ladies and gentlemen. It's quite an honor to be recognized by one of your top communities in Oakland County. I'm humbled by this president, I really am. I've got to admit, this is probably the first time that the executive, and we do, we try hard along with our local units and to have that appreciated is important to me. I picked up the award in Washington, I think on February the fifth or sixth, and I'm trying to think what am I going to say? And I thought, well, the reason I'm here is because I've outlived all the competition. As good as any. But I personify Oakland County, in fact, I'm chief executive. So this is really a recognition I'm picking up next month of Oakland County, that's much Brooks Patterson, because I didn't do it by myself, you all know that. We've got a good team up in Oakland County, I think my staff is one of the best, but then we work with the county board on a weekly basis. And half the programs I launched could not be successful without the support, in some cases, of financial underwriting of those programs. So the county board is an integral part of what we do. And then I got the other county officials and I've asked them for major cuts. I mean, the first year we cut the budget, it was over a series of about five years. I asked Sheriff, the sheriff for five point five million. And Bouchard stepped up and said, no problem. And he go to the courts. They're always a little bit recalcitrant, as you may know, over the years. And I went to Nancy Grant and said, you owe me six hundred and sixty, because that's her proportion of what I needed to get the budget balance. She said, that's a no-brainer, Brooks. We got that kind of relationship. And I work hard at to maintain it because even though we have political spats, it doesn't do with the day-to-day operation. What makes a great county, frankly, is sixty-one communities. And one of the best communities is the city of Troy. You know that. You've always been that star in the crown, so far ahead of the competition in many cases. Troy always ranks very high in all the previews I've seen of cities. We do those, now we don't rank them, but we line up all the awards and all the budgetary considerations, the thing we look at. And Troy is one of the top communities. I don't know if you know this, as a bit of trivia, but I started my career here in Troy. When I graduated from law school at U of D in nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight, I came out to Troy. And I told my mom and dad, I want to go out to the country. So where'd I go? One nine oh, West Big Beaver. So I could literally, at the hotel, the Marriott is where the law office was. And I called my mother, first son, I'm sitting in my office, and there are cows grazing between us and Yamazaki. Had I known. So I really watched Troy grow from those days to, you know, the golden corridor you have here. You guys have really have set the stage. And to be recognized by a city that is so accomplished, I'm really flattered. I thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I see you're doing so well. Yeah, thank you. Getting there.
You guys go that way.
They come behind you? Yeah, I can walk right away. I can walk. It's going to take a minute, but I can get to it. Great job on the wires. I've got to hang on now, so. It's okay, it's great to see you. I'll just come up a little bit closer so I can hang on. There we go.
All this gray and black. Turn sideways. Yep, sideways is good.
I might ask my goal. Never thought it was possible. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Back to business.
We have no carryover items, so our next order of business is public hearings. We have three public hearings scheduled this evening. The first one is a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG request to waive unobligated two thousand and eleven funds to be presented by Cindy Stewart or her staff.
Cindy Stewart is here to present all the public hearings tonight. This will be heard.
I will open the public hearing and good evening.
Hi. This one, we have, we had twelve thousand dollars in our two thousand and eleven that we had not put under contract. We thought we were going to use them for parks and recs facilities for Milverton Park. So all the county is asking us to do is just obligate these funds and then in the next public hearing, we're going to reprogram them.
Any questions from council? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move the, move the unit forward just as it's written here, please.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed. Is there a discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is a public hearing for reprogramming Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program year two thousand and eleven funds. I will open the public hearing and welcome again Cindy Stewart.
Thank you. We would like to take the twelve thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents and reprogram them into our flood drain. That will be, it is already completed, but the city put money in for the flood drain projects as well as CDBG, so that's going to offset the city funds from two thousand and eleven.
Questions from council? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the council for resolution. Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
I move that, move the resolution as printed.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. The next public hearing is a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year two thousand and fourteen Funds. Once again, Cindy Stewart. I will open the public hearing.
Get all mine done at once.
Sure.
Every year Oakland County, we have to have a public hearing before we apply for our funds. And this year they've advised us that we have a hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and six dollars. And we would like to program them in yard services. You know, we do the home chore program where we mow seniors and persons with disabilities their lawns. And then in the summer, we take care of their snow removal. We have approximately ninety seniors right now and we have room for more. So as they, after this big snow, I had a lot of requests for applications. And additional monies, we can only do a certain percentage for home chore. The additional percentage, we will put that into parks and recreation facilities. We want to finish Milverton Park. We don't have any play structure or anything for the two- to five-year-olds. So we're going to work to get a play structure and then the surface, the soft surface there and see what else has to be finished up for that.
Questions for Cindy? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I'll move resolution E three as printed. Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson, that we approve E three as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anyone has signed up for that this evening. So we will move to response. There shouldn't be any response this evening. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. The first order of business, there are no board and committee appointments this evening, so we will move to I two, which is, excuse me, board and committee nominations, first being mayoral nominations. And I will move that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby forwards the following nominated person to serve on the following board and committee as indicated to the next regular city council meeting. The Board of Review, there is an appointment request for reappointment by Eileen Turner. So I will move and nominate that name for the position and term that expires one thirty-one two thousand and seventeen for the Board of Review.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson, that we nominate Eileen Turner for the term to expire one thirty-one two thousand and seventeen for the Board of Review. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next order of business is city council nominations. I will turn the table over to Mayor Pro Tem Henderson for those nominations.
Mayor, I'd like to move the following nominations. The Election Commission, term held by David C. Anderson and term held by Timothy Dewan. Terms to expire one thirty-one two thousand and fifteen on both. The Liquor Advisory Committee, I'd like to move a term currently held by Stan Godlewski through one thirty-one two thousand and seventeen. And a vacancy by Ukrainian Bodan's term, he's not registered elector in Troy any longer. I'd like to forward Dave, David Gorsika's name. The Traffic Committee, I'd like to move the names Richard Kilmer, Al Petrulis, and Peter Ziegenfelder, terms expiring January thirty-first two thousand and seventeen. I believe that's it.
I believe that's it. Is there a second?
Support.
There's a lot of support there. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we nominate those that were offered by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson. Is there a discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no requests for closed session this evening, so we will move to consent agenda. Anyone at the council table wish to pull a consent item this evening? Somebody would like to move the resolution? Councilman Pennington?
Mayor, I'd like to move forward all the J items on the consent agenda.
Support.
As printed, thank you.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilman Fleming, that we approve all of the consent agenda items as printed. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they have all been approved. Next item of business are memorandums and future council agenda items. There is an announcement for a public hearing, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, rezoning application file number Z seven forty-five, a proposed Amber Center Town Homes and Lifts, west side of Liverneys, north of Town Center, thirty-nine, thirty-four zero nine Liverneys, section twenty-one, from O Office District to BB Big Beaver District. There are no memorandums submitted by city council, so our next order of business is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. First speaker is Ron Butterball, Troy resident. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Like most residents, I moved to Troy for its superb city services and world-class schools. Successes or failures in the city have a major impact on the schools and vice versa. A couple of years ago, the city went through some tough, embarrassing times. And through all of your efforts, the city council, city management, and city employees banded together. You returned our city to a place of honor, regaining momentum in all the right ways. Now, however, serious issues are building on the Troy School District side. Let's make a quick comparison. When the city faced reduced revenue, you took action. Everyone shared in pain to stabilize city finances. And when the economy improved, you took equally quick steps to eliminate mandatory furlough days. Your vote on this issue demonstrated your integrity and appreciation for the staff. You trusted the staff, the staff trusted you, and your actions earned their respect and loyalty. Well done, council. On the school side, the story's not as bright. Faced with the same financial reaction... Faced with the same financial reality, the school board initially acted to navigate these challenges. Teachers, administration, and the board worked together and shared the pain. Throughout this period, educational excellence was maintained, a job well done by all. Now, however, our school future is at risk. Teachers have been working without a contract for six months. The board refuses to recognize the sacrifices of the teachers. The board is asking the teachers to do more work for less pay. For the first time in its history, quality teachers are beginning to leave the school district. Teacher morale is at an all-time low. Some, although certainly not all, of the board members forget it is the teachers who make an education system survive and thrive. The board says we want to compensate teachers well and competitively. That's a great soundbite, but bears little resemblance to reality. The board's refusal to allow the return of the step compensation schedule will result in our teachers being the lowest-paid teachers in Oakland County within five years. That's right, I ran the numbers. The board has done nothing to earn the respect of Troy teachers. They say, "Yes, trust us." Hiding behind their motto of being fiscally responsible, the board's communications are sometimes deceptive. The board should follow the lead of this council, reinstate the step program, and negotiate a fair and reasonable contract with Troy teachers. This doesn't require mediation or fact-finding, they should just do it. It impacts our city as well as our schools, and I ask you as council members to urge the school board to follow your lead in their, in their actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening on public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals advanced, so next order of business is council comments. Everybody wants to get out of here in record time. I just, I just have a comment, a brief comment, and we received quite a, quite a few emails this evening from staff regarding the roads and other things, and I think it's important to point out that we probably had one of the worst storms that you'll ever have recently, and I think it's a credit to the staff that the city got cleaned up through no fault of our own. When we have those kind of storms, the potholes come out, and we know there is responsibility that the city has for their streets, and there's also responsibility from the county. And it's tough to get the county to come out and do a repair on a, on a road that's deteriorating so bad that it's hard to even keep up with. So congratulations to staff, Mr. Kishnik, for a job well done. I only got one comment about, about the potholes, but I pass that along to you, and it was a serious pothole, and thanks to you and your staff, though, for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any comments regarding the reports on the agenda this evening? No one signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There are no study items this evening. There are no closed sessions this evening. We are adjourned. Good evening and thank you for coming this evening.